Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this work session of the Richfield City Council. It's July 23rd, 2024, and it's 7:00 PM. And I'll turn it over to City Manager Reverie Guss.
Thank you, Mayor. Before introducing tonight's topic, I want to introduce our new senior analyst, Courtney Miller. Courtney started last week, and she has already hit the ground running. We're super excited to have her. And I just wanted to give her a chance to briefly introduce herself.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm very excited to be here. Like Reverie said, this is my second week with the city. I'm coming from the city of Lakeville most recently. I'm really looking forward to working with you all and working on the Richfield.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, that's right. Round of applause, for sure. Tonight's work session is mostly an update on Woodlake Nature Center building project. It's a chance for you all to ask questions, to provide feedback. We will also present the draft wording for the upcoming referendum on local sales tax. We do need feedback on that because we're going to present that to you for a vote at your next council meeting, which is August 14th. Reminder that it's August 14th because August 13th is the primary. We want to make sure that it's as clear as possible for residents so they can make an informed decision. We've scheduled about 45 minutes for the conversation about the Woodlake Nature Center building, and then about 25 minutes for the discussion on the referendum questions. And with that, I will turn it over to Carl Hugh Miller, our Recreation Services Director.
Thank you. Tonight, we have HGA architects here with us. We have Glenn Andrew and Noah joining us. They're going to give a presentation on the schematic design, as well as engagement that we've been doing regarding the building. Before we do that, it's been a busy couple of months. We've been doing a lot around the nature center. We had a survey and wetland delineation. In the survey, we surveyed all of the four-inch trees to know where they are so that we could be conscious of that as we were designing the building. The wetland delineation was reviewed by a technical expert panel, and it came back positive in the sense that we have more space to build on than we initially thought, which has been really helpful. We also went through a four-month construction manager at risk, RFQ/RFP process, as it was outlined in state statute. Mortenson Construction scored the highest, mostly because of their approach. They have a really strong team. They have resources that they can bring to the project that other companies didn't. And then they also have a lot of past experience working in really delicate areas and complicated projects as well. We also did an RFP process for the interpretive displays, and the Science Museum of Minnesota and Blue Rhino submitted a joint proposal, which is slightly unusual, and they were selected. They are nationally recognized exhibit designers, and they're very creative and have very unique and interactive and engaging displays and educational exhibits that they create. And then we're also getting geotechnical and soil testing done, and that should start taking place in September, and that'll help inform us as we develop the footings and other structural pieces to the building, as well as figuring out the geothermal system that we're going to put in and what type that might be, and if that's possible. So we've been working with HGA for a while now, both in the community engagement process and also developing a schematic design. The building design is more finalized than the site plan design, but we're looking for feedback on both of those. Now is the point at which we can still make changes and easily make changes. So we're really interested in what you have to say on those things. With that, I'll hand it off to Glenn.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. It's really great to be with you tonight to share progress. As Carl mentioned, I'm with HGA. My name's Glenn Wagasbeck. I'm a design principal and architect with HGA. I'm here with my colleagues Andrew Holmgren and Noah Exum, and we're going to lead you through kind of where we're at in the process and then sort of land on the current design. So we'll start with the -- whoops. Momentarily start with the process.
Oh, did I hit the run button?
Yeah, you just go down.
You just kind of scroll.
Yeah, you just push it down.
And the scroll.
Prepared everything else except for how to run the clicker.
So this is a show of confidence here. Okay. Well, I'm going to skip through the agenda and just get to the process. So we're going to talk process and schedule first, and then Noah's going to share a little bit about where we're at and where we've been in the engagement process specifically, and what some of the key findings and takeaways today have been. And then we're going to switch gears and start to talk about the design, sort of the site and building planning, exterior and interior, and then share with you some imagery, so some exterior images of the current state of the design. As Carl mentioned, this is very malleable. This is the schematic design phase, and so if you have any familiarity with projects, this is early design phase. This is meant to get your feedback, and we've got thick skins, and so all the feedback you can give us is great. So, all right, so let's -- all right, this is working. Okay. So I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. This is what we call a project charter. As we -- as the design progresses, we just try to capture, almost like a one-page elevator speech, I'll call it, or description of the project, what the guiding principles are, and those include what we're hearing from stakeholders, staff in the community. And so this will actually evolve through the process of engagement. You can see on the right, we're starting to have some specific design criteria. I'll just give an example, like in the category of water, stormwater capture. We know stormwater is hugely important for this site, and so that could be a feature and something we're going to address. And I'm not going to go into the metrics along the bottom, but that's sort of capturing the metrics as we go, everything from the program to sustainability goals. So today, we're nearing the end of our schematic design phase. That's why we're here to get some feedback from you all. And you can see where the arrow is sort of halfway, I'll call it, through the design process. So the project goes out for bid in November, and then, you know, we're going to work, of course, with our construction management partner, Mortenson, to work through some of the constructibility, make sure that we're on budget, you know, and have the scope nailed down, along with Carl and our folks. Let's see. So I think I'm going to kind of go through this and really focus on the engagement piece now. Do you want me to do this, or you can just --
I can click down. Click through it, okay. Yeah, so hello. It's great to meet you all and be here to present this. I know Carl has shared some of the information on engagement before, but we really want to talk today about how the engagement process has influenced our decision-making when it comes to the design that we're going to be sharing. So the way that we have approached the engagement strategy for this project is kind of with a funnel approach, right? So we are working broadly to get input from the entire, you know, Richfield and Woodlake community through the survey, as well as open house events, and then taking some of that information that we're hearing more broadly and narrowing it down with focus groups. So these are kind of groups of key stakeholders who have been identified, whether it's because they are using the space a lot, like the Woodlake staff or public school groups, or are part of growing and historically underserved communities, like our focus groups with outdoor Latino and the Spanish-speaking population, or the work that we've done with people with disabilities and Frazier. That allows us to kind of understand what some of these specific groups might need and how their needs are similar to or different from the broader public. And then in the ongoing meetings with the project team, we are taking all of that information and using that to drive the decisions that we make. So a quick recap from the survey that went out, and this was a great survey. We got a ton of results, and it's very clear how much Woodlake means to the entire community. We saw a lot of -- when asked what values were most important to Woodlake, there was a lot of consensus about sustainability, conservation, the idea of a peaceful space, an educational space, and something that's welcoming to all. Asked what would be most important to their experience when visiting Woodlake in the future, the quality of exhibits and educational programs was the number-one concern. Places to sit and relax or work outside and inside were both important. Views of nature from inside the building were important. That's something people really appreciate about the structure right now and want to make sure we preserve. And then access to restrooms and drinking fountains without having to go inside the building was important enough that it made it to the top five and is also identified as one of the key reasons why people are going to the building right now. So we know that those spaces, which are typically not very glamorous, are actually going to be really important to people's experience for this. And of course, this is a project that's being funded by taxpayers, and I know you all have a referendum on your mind, so we did want to ask people, you know, what do you think is most important to invest in for this space? And again, it returns back to those values we were seeing. It's nature, conservation, education, and programming, making the building more energy-efficient and sustainable, and improving landscaping paths and play area around the building, as well as the exhibits, which of course we'll be working on in the future with the exhibit The workshops that we did, we did a number of different activities, whether it's just, you know, having conversations with folks, doing some kind of creative visioning and collaging and things like that, and also an exercise called Keep, Toss, Change. And I think it's important to look at this image here because it really encapsulates a lot of what we're hearing, where on the left, for the keeps, we're getting so many responses about what people love about this building. They love the scale of it, they love the way it like fits into its surroundings and the site. And the little dots on each of these post-it notes are things where people were able to kind of co-sign or agree with something. So you can see there's also a lot of agreement for each of these things. There are very few things that people want to toss. Some of them are like mosquitoes and airplane noise, so there's even fewer that are within our control, which is great news for us. But then when you get to change, there's a ton of ideas people have. Like, again, this is a space people are really familiar with, they've thought about how it can be better for them, but you will see that there's a little less agreement with the dots, right? So people are wanting a lot of different things out of this site. So part of what we've all been talking about then is how do we balance these conflicting desires, right? We were getting responses that less is more, don't make it a museum, don't Disneyfy it, you know? But also, there are a ton of different programs that people would like to see here. Folks want to increase lake access and docks. There have been a couple of comments we've heard about, you know, adding something that's really tall so you can get a bird's eye view. Some folks are saying no coffee shop on site, it's just going to contribute to litter and noise, and it's not necessary. Other people are saying having a place to get a coffee, you know, watch the birds, supervise your kids would be awesome, and it would generate funds for the nature center. The idea of an urban oasis keeps coming up, but as does the space for kids to play and be loud. And of course, you know, with the idea of conservation, we want to make sure we're minimizing human impacts on nature and not changing the site too much, but there's also a real drive to make the site more accessible, which means more paved paths and things like that. So those kind of conflicting desires and how we balance each of those are things that we're continuing to work through and things that Glenn and Andrew are going to talk through in the design.
All right, let's switch gears to site and building planning, so more design aspects of the project and the status of where we're at today. Carl mentioned the tet panel and some of the constraints on the site, the wetland delineation that was recently done. I'll just point to a few things here. So Lake Shore Drive, Lyndale Drive, so here's the existing parking area, and you can see sort of dashed in here the existing building footprint. We have hatched, or cross-hatched, what we would call potential buildable area, so basically everything within the setbacks of the lake, within the zoning setbacks of the parcel, the, you know, 75-foot shoreline buffer, as well as the B3 wetland offset, which is 50, 50 feet. Since this is a B3 compliant project, we have to comply with those wetland restrictions as well. Let's see. And another, a couple of constraints that are real for us are the presence of underground utilities, namely stormwater utilities. And you can see this particular one that's buried about 10 to 15 feet below grade, kind of bisects what we're calling the buildable area. Now, this isn't necessarily all desirable buildable area, but it's potential buildable area. And so as we examine the site, we really zeroed in on, you know, this is probably the best place to build with the least amount of disturbance, especially for increasing the size of the building. Another thing to mention, too, the existing finished floor elevation is at 826 feet above sea level, the finished floor elevation, and we're proposing to raise that. So that, you know, provides a level of protection in terms of flooding. We know this is, you know, this lake is part of the overall stormwater management system of the area, and so this is our starting point. I think we're going to try to figure out where the sweet spot is for that, but our kind of schematic design or conceptual level elevation for the finished floor is up above where the existing floor is, and so that has some impacts on the site planning. So I'll just give a quick overview. This will still be somewhat recognizable, Lake Shore Drive, Lyndale. The parking, you'll notice, is bisected. One of the things that we actually studied in the original pre-design, and that's a concept that stuck, is the idea of bringing that immersive experience. If you, I'm sure you all have spent some time at Woodlake, the idea of an urban oasis that was mentioned earlier, it's real. I mean, when you get out there, you are in the, you know, middle of the Minnesota landscape. If we can bring that experience, start that experience at the sidewalk, because this is a really pedestrian, you know, active pedestrian-friendly site. We've got a lot of people coming from across Lake Shore Drive, biking into this site as well as driving. We want to extend that experience as far towards the sidewalk as possible. And so you see the parking is bisected. You see where we have multimodal path. What that indicates is kind of what we're thinking of as a bus pull-through only, so that we could have buses drop off on the northwest remaining parking area, and then the buses can turn using that multimodal path onto Lake Shore Drive. But essentially, it would be bus use only or special use only, is our thinking. So the idea is that it would be pedestrian first and then vehicles like that second. Let's see. The parking count, the existing parking is about, I think it's 110 stalls. This reflects adding some stalls to the southeast, southeast. This island, we were able to capture another eight parking stalls, and then if we can stripe some parallel parking in the northwest parking lot, we think we can kind of have a zero sum, I'll say. And the parking count for this, just from a city ordinance code, is, requires something in the order of magnitude of like 57 or 60 stalls, which is, you know, less than what's on-site. Now, I know that's just the building, and people use the site for a lot of other reasons, and I know parking can be challenged sometimes, so that may be something to discuss. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to get into more of the site program, I'll call it.
Yeah, so thanks for letting us be here. So zooming in a little bit, well, in a minute or two, we'll go through the actual, the building programming, but right now, talking a little bit about what's going on around the building. And if those of you that are familiar, you know, there's a fence, that parking lot feels somewhat separate from that entry. And so as Glenn mentioned, you know, one of our goals has been to not only increase the programming and the activity around the building, but really create a direct path or a visual connection to some of those amenities that are on the outside. So as you're approaching the building from Lake Shore Drive, one of the first programs would be a dry creek playmeadow, so this would be part of the stormwater management. This goes in with raising and lowering the building. We're going to be working to manage stormwater that's coming off the parking lot and flowing downhill towards the lake. So one of the first amenities would be this dry creek playmeadow that's planted with native plantings. Kids can walk through that. You could, you know, you can envision unpaved trails that kind of weave through that landscape. Moving around the building, there's a nature play area and a community lawn, so this would be a place where kids could come and play, be loud, run around. There's also visual connection to the inside of the building, which you'll see, so parents could watch their kids that are out there. There would also be an opportunity for planned events in that community lawn space. Continuing to move around the building, the current building from that previous diagram is roughly right here. There is a existing amphitheater that's being proposed to be moved off to the northwest, so that would have a direct connection to the multipurpose spaces. So classes and groups of students or other programming events can be using the multipurpose spaces and have direct connection to that amphitheater and that outdoor classroom gathering space. Along the southwest side, on the lakeside, it's obscured a little bit by the roof. There is a deck that is partially covered and uncovered that provides access from the interior, so users of the building that are renting a space or in the lounge or in the exhibit can exit out onto the deck and have a direct view of nature. And so, and then moving around to the southeast, again, once we get to the building planning, this is where we have located some of the rental functions, and so this trail connection would tie into some of the skiing and walking trails that would, that tie into the greater So zooming into the building planning, part of the organization of the building was to, both for the exterior renderings and the building design, but also the building planning, was to borrow from the existing building. And I think one thing that was, that really stood out to us through all the information gathering that we did was the connection indoor/outdoor, both visually, as well as the number of doors that are in the nature center, the direct access outside. And so from the main entry, from that main entry to the street, you're entering into the main exhibit space, and that main exhibit space is wanting to stretch and, and sort of, and coexist with some of the circulation spaces. That exhibit space is really the hub. And around the hub of the exhibit space, the blue space is the offices, the bright green space is the multipurpose and the programming areas, and down the south side, there's the animal care, which is sort of part of the exhibit space, raptor muse, and then off to the east would be the mechanical and building support space, along with some of the rental functions. And so what we tried to do with organizing these sort of blocks of program is to create these spaces in and around the building where the landscape or the outdoor programming can start to come into the building. That dry creek bed area as part of landscaping can come into the building here. Nature play can be located in this zone of the building with direct visual connection to the lounge, as well as access to the corridor around multipurpose. And then on the south side, the windows from the exhibit can look out over the lake or birdhouses and things, the nature that's there to provide viewing. So the idea is to try to create these zones and not recreate it, but borrow from the existing facility, how there's sort of all of these direct connections to nature, different views out of the building from depending where you are.
Can I just add one thing? It's also a way for us to break the scale of the building down a little bit. One of the challenges, I'll say, of a building that's larger than the existing, by probably a factor of three or four, is the scale of the existing building is amazing. Like, people really respond to it. It's welcoming. There's some visual cues and spatial cues that are really wonderful about the building. It's broken into pieces, you know, the different roof forms and the sizes and shapes of rooms that are sort of gathered as a village, I'll call it, into one sort of location. We can't really do that with a building this much larger, and so what we've done is organized it into these pieces that can then sort of be broken down in a similar way. We'll start to see that in the exterior imagery.
One other thing that I would add, just because I think it connects back to some of the things we were talking about with engagement, is, you know, to Glenn's point, we have multiple types of spaces within each of these areas. So when you are having these different functions, there are three lounge spaces, right? So you can have a lounge that's a little bit quieter there, adjacent to the exhibit space, a lounge here that's adjacent to a conference and rental, so you could envision if you are renting that conference room, you could have kind of your own lounge area that could be identified for you, that's separate from all the kids running around, as well as that kind of central one that can be a little bit, you know, the louder, more active space. And that allows us to kind of have the different programming elements and spaces that folks are asking for while still maintaining that, you know, since that some people can be here to watch five-year-olds run and play, and some people can be here for a quiet winter eve, like evening, and both can coexist at the same time.
Is this a good place to stop for questions? Is there probably a number? Councilmember Whalen, you had some?
I was just going to ask, going to like pale yellow to the northwest of the exhibit?
There?
No, up.
Northwest, up here.
Yeah, so that appears to be bathrooms, and what else?
So in this space, so this, this is the large gender-neutral bathroom bank. In this zone, we have an adult changing, a family bathroom with an adult changing station. There's a sensory room, so this would be a space where children or parents could go to have some quiet respite space. And then there's a janitor's closet and also a public lactation mother's room in that zone, too.
Are there any questions, Sean? Our council member here for Larry?
How are we doing, Sean? Oh, whatever. My questions are mainly about the multipurpose space with the event space. I'm a little bit concerned I've submitted, I submitted some written feedback for you to look at later, but how viable is it to like staff only that space? My concern is that this building looks so open that like, are we going to need people to be like monitoring the exhibits, that people here for an event at the building are not going to be wandering around the exhibits damaging things? Right now, we only staff this building from like eight to five Monday through Friday, and I want to be sure that if somebody wants to have an event on a Saturday evening, that it's possible to do that without having like seven staff on site or whatever the minimum would be.
Yeah, our goal is to do it so that if there's an event happening, that it can be staffed with one person. The part of that is with where the reception is, too. If someone's at the reception, they can see the entire exhibit space and whatnot and do work and that sort of thing. I did see your comment about having a door there, and I think that's another valid solution. I think that the one thing, as I'm thinking about it, that may be a difficulty with that is you're blocking off that portion, and I could see if someone's renting the whole building, that they also want to have like something happening in the exhibit space, too. Part of the reason you rent a nature center is so that you get the nature center part of it as well. So that would, that would be my only concern about that, but it's definitely something worth considering. Our goal is that it be one person staffing.
Okay, one person is promising. I guess I'm also curious about the height in the multipurpose room. For some of the renderings, it looks like the low points of that room seem fairly low, and I'm a little bit concerned if you're actually using the full space of all three potential rooms, that it would almost be like oppressively low to try to like see somebody speaking in the middle of the room.
Well, I'm sure you guys can talk about it. We did a lot of tours of nature centers, and this was a huge concern of mine. We've been to a couple where they have, what was it, seven-foot or eight-foot divider, where the, between the dividers was only seven feet.
Yeah.
And that was very disturbing. Like, you'd look across and it was, it really interrupted. What we have here is, I believe, is nine feet is how tall the separated spaces are.
How many square feet is the large space?
All told, about 4,000.
It's roughly 3,400 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah. So each room is roughly 1,000 square feet right now. So in working with Carl and Paul, the goal is that when opened, this would be a roughly 100-person event space. That would be the max size for that.
Okay. But we were talking about a room that's like, what, four times larger than this room with a lower ceiling than this room at several points? I'm a little bit concerned that it's not going to be as functional as a large space if you wanted to do it for another type of event, like a wedding reception or an event involving a speaker that has a podium or something like that. So I'm a little bit worried about that.
Yeah, we can, that's something we can study.
And I do want to just remember, like, although, of course, the main function here is a nature center, we have long talked about having a reservable banquet and event space, and we don't have another viable site to do that. So I really want to be sure that that, we're optimizing for that in every way.
So one of the places we toured was Westwood Hills, and they have those nine-foot dividers between the rooms, and it's a, it's smaller than this, but similarly, we mentioned in space. I encourage you to go check that out, because you get a feeling, that room, which HGA designed, didn't have that feeling, even though the dividers came down, it felt like a big open space. So if, I guess I'd encourage you to go check that out, and then let me know what you think of it, so we can.
I can just homework that sounds good.
I think just one thing to add, too, the taller those doors get, that we try, we try to find a sweet spot between operability, and the taller those doors get, the heavier they get. And so it's finding a sweet spot for operability with, you know, for staff to open and close them as well. So I don't think that's the reason we should keep them low, but just all, just throwing into the hopper all the different factors that we're looking at, too, so.
into the hopper all the different factors that we're looking at, too, so.
And then one other question I had about the, the use of the deck for events also seems beneficial. I'm just curious, the shape of it, where it gets fairly narrow in that boomerang shape versus a larger, more usable rectangle? Is there, are we trying to actively avoid people congregating outside, or is that just an aesthetic choice?
I think right now, it's, we're in the schematic design, like Carl said, the, the site and the outdoor space is slightly behind the building planning, obviously the detail with the doors and things. What we were suggesting with the deck was the movement and starting to suggest to them there's larger areas of congregation and there's maybe narrower way areas of passage or other things. How that, that line can get manipulated, and I think we plan to work with them on where do you want gathering, where do you not want gathering? We're, as part of that building elevation discussion, and how the building gets graded up and around there, is there opportunities to have openings in that deck where you could walk out onto grade? That could also start to separate the deck and zone the areas. So there, I think there's a lot of development right now. I would say this is a suggestion of, it's not just a big square deck that when you walk out there, there's a vast open area. It's, it's trying to create some different nodes and areas, as well as a path along it.
So, and I like the idea a lot of the, the railroad deck. It does look aesthetically great. I just wonder for the function of the potential event use of that space, it might be nice to have a little bit larger of a rectangle immediately outside to be able to do an indoor/outdoor type of thing.
Sounds good, yeah.
Other questions? Sharon?
No, you were talking about exactly where you are, whatever. Now, I know you're looking at those large glass windows where you could, people are talking about having observation decks and, you know, all sorts of different designs. Is this gonna be incorporated into that somehow, or are people gonna be indoors but yet overlook what it is now?
Yeah, I think the way the building, sorry, you could answer this, too. But the way the building's organized is try to, trying to maximize the views out of the building, so some of those views may be from those, those decks. You know, we've even labeled them on the site plan, observation, observation decks.
South.
Yeah, facing the lake, basically, yeah.
Yeah, all, all of these different nodes would, would be potential observation. And I think, different than the existing nature center that's basically down at the waterline, this would, this is gonna be up some number above that. So the, this would, you would be up above on the deck or within the building footprint, looking maybe just over the top of the, the cattails. So you'd have a little bit broader view.
So, in a related question to that, are we gonna have glass that'll minimize bird strikes? I know that that had happened in some of the other nature centers, they had to put in specialized glass.
That is in, in the design from the start. We, that's part of B3 requirements, as well as, I think would just be good practice for the nature center. So yes, that's already in our early schematic design.
And then I had a question for Carl. If they're putting in raptor muse and stuff, are we planning to expand our programming so that we have raptors?
That's the thought, that we develop a volunteer corps that could help us maintain the raptors and then incorporate that as part of the programming. I know another nature center's raptor program is very popular and also a program that people think might be to use, too, so it could potentially also be self, self-sustaining financially in that sense as well.
I was pleased to hear that you're looking at geothermal. I think that's really important. And I have a question. Right now, we've got the whole nature center basically fenced in, and from what I'm understanding here, we're basically gonna be removing the fence on that northern part of it. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so we've been, Paul and I have been talking a lot about fences at the nature center, and that wooden fence all the way along the parking lot, we were considering removing it. I'd be interested in your all's thoughts on that. The other thing we've been discussing, which I'd be interested in your thoughts on, is the access points around the park. There are some of the access points are not accessible from the street. We were considering opening those, putting bike lockup station, or bike, bike racks there that people could walk their bikes to, so they don't bring them into the park, and making them more official entrances. We heard, have heard from residents, there are residents who drive to the entrance in order to walk the park, and I understand why in the past they've kept it more closed off, but also it's a really valuable amenity to residents, and if you're living in that area, it, I think it's important to have access to the park.
Biggest, my feedback on that is to make sure we have like a secure place to store the bikes, so we don't have people riding bikes at two in the morning, going through there and that kinda stuff, 'cause I remember when I was a teenager. You know, so I think that would be good. Do other people have feedback, Sean?
Yes, I wanna say enthusiastic, the opaque fence was in my written feedback, but as much as possible, I would really like it to be accessible. I think there, there's a decent, I mean, it's kinda hidden, but there is an entrance on the south side. I use that personally quite a lot from Bryant Avenue and Seventy-third. But like, if you live on Lakeshore Drive over to the west, you'd have to walk all the way around to that. There's no access at all from the northwest corner. I would love to have multiple ways in and out. And just, I think, you already know this, of course, but like for our context, 'cause we compare this to Westwood a lot, and I notice they really only have one way in and out, but it's such a more like isolated area compared to this. This is so much more urban of a setting. I was looking at the, the walk score, Westwood Hills is fifteen and this is seventy. So like, I think it makes sense that we're much more open. And visually, if we need fencing at all, I'd like it to be low with the parking lot and feel less closed off for the rest of the area.
Ben?
Yeah, I, a few more technical thoughts. I completely agree about not having fence, making it more accessible throughout the park. I love the, bringing it up to the street. I, I am not an expert in this area, but when I first saw the split parking lot, my immediate thought was like, have we asked a bus driver about that? And so I, if it hasn't happened yet, would encourage that, but I love that that becomes more natural. I, question first and then comment on how to share with the public. I didn't see in the photos a connection to the trail that comes off this corner. Is that part of the plan?
Yeah, short answer is yes.
Okay. We should put that in the photos, so we don't get the public confused about it, 'cause there, I mean, to the point about neighbors, just like coming in and walking, like, this is not, or people who do multiple laps, like, this is not always a start and finish only. And so having a very clear, like, I wanna just continue through this area is important. My other comment, I agree about kind of expanding deck space and having significant seating area outdoors, too, would be great. Like, we have a picnic shelter, but that's a little more removed, and so if people wanna bring them picnic lunch, great. My one question that might be a rabbit hole that's not worth it is just that the main entry doesn't feel super obvious, particularly if you park on that side. And I know that like, the experience, once you're in the building, is you're generally like looking toward the lake, but it, it just feels weird that like, if you were on the street, you're looking at the offices. And like, the blue part is kind of its own little spur. And if we already have this spur in the lower right that is like not, mostly not public use, I don't, I don't know what this does to the whole design, but like, could the offices be part of that and have more of a sort of flat front with a obvious entryway that faces the street and either parking lot, you could see it easily?
I think that would be a great thing to discuss when we look at the renderings, 'cause I think that's gonna help. If we're looking at the renderings while we discuss that, I think it'll help it make a little more sense.
Sure, okay. I think to discuss not exactly your point, another, but another thing that we were working on, Glenn touched on those setbacks and that sort of buildable area. The other, I think, thing we were, we were trying to avoid was disturbing as much of this area as we could. And with the wetland setback, which is this dash, dash line that comes through here, the more we co-located these building masses, sort of the bigger, the bigger, the more it pushed into the site. So this was our attempt at sort of, of trying to not block that crossing route while still creating these nodes of public outdoor space within the building. So I think, just to provide some thought of why it was located there, not that we should, like Noah said, shouldn't look at turning that entry.
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering if the blue spot moved to where the words "main entry" are now, and the main entry was like where the "R" of reception is.
Sort of like cranking the.
Yeah, but I, not an expert.
Still being a park center, yeah. And, and one of the things, and you may have already seen the, seen the imagery, so, one of the things we're trying to do is not necessarily architecturally distinguish between what's an office and what's a multipurpose space.
Sure.
Taking the same aesthetic approach, using the same material palette, the same kind of treatment of the roofs and that sort of thing, to tie all the different parts of the building together, so they all feel like a coherent whole, and so it's not necessarily this is the office and this is the town hall and this is the maintenance garage, that sort, that sort of thing. But I do wanna acknowledge your, your initial point about like, where's the front door and how do people get there? And I think visual cues, both from the street and from the parking, are gonna be super important, and all of those can be reinforced through the, the building design and the site design.
So I know Simon's got a question. Before we go to that, the gray area, is that public?
Can I add one, one small thing? So one thing that they haven't talked about that has been a big thing as we're thinking about it, is having separate entrances for separate purposes. So if you come up as a school group, they're not coming through the main entrance, they're coming on the right side of the building there. And so, as you're thinking about it, too, the, the reception's right there in the middle so that it has good visibility of all the different space, public spaces that people can enter from. And I think people really enter from where, we'll have that main entrance, but people will enter based on their use of the space. If you're a regular and you come every day and get some coffee and sit and have your kids play in the play area, you probably come through the play area, drop your kids off, grab your coffee and sit there. If you're new to the building, you'd probably come in the main entrance. If you're a school group, you're gonna come in that, that, the top left corner there, just to keep people away from the group. So I think the main entrance is important, but also people will find those other, other ways that, ways in as well.
Okay, that makes more sense to me, 'cause it, yeah. And then I think much of the public will just assume that that's their parking lot if they're coming by car, and that that's for school groups. That's fine, okay.
All right, thank you. So the gray area also is public. I just wanna clarify that before we go to Simon's question.
This, this area?
Yeah.
No, this would be, I would say is private or back of house.
I was confused, 'cause it said rentals, and so.
So this little, this section?
Super light green.
The super light green would be the rental area, so someone coming in through the, the front door or from anywhere else can be directed down this quarter to access the rental area. And then behind there, the gray would be back of house.
That makes a lot more sense. I was confused by the label.
Yeah, and I guess to add to that, too, that kinda space, the, the green, that's the rentals, we're looking at using it as rentals in winter, but then the rest, ski season is only so long, the rest of the time, we'd use it as like a classroom space.
Oh, good. All right, thanks, Simon, for being patient.
Thank you. And, and thank you, all of you. This is just, it emotionally just feels really wonderful to be here with you all talking about this, so I just wanna acknowledge that and say thank you. And I said several, several thoughts in no particular order. I agree with, with Ben with regards to the, the reception area and kind of different thoughts about how that could be. And I, I have the same thought of kind of rotating that, and I have an alternative thought I'm gonna get to in a second. But with the deck, also agreed with what Sean was saying about that. And one thought that I have, one way that you can maybe expand that and give it like a vanishing energy towards the, towards the, the lake, would be to have that same initial shape, but then have a tiered step down and out. So you could potentially actually put something like the amphitheater in the deck through a tiered deck that might just communicate efficiently with the space. Hey, this is, this is the gathering space. If you wanted to address people outside, you're kind of coming right from multipurpose rooms to the, so just, just a thought, and that could also free up that space to move the offices off of the multipurpose rooms, too, which then would kind of create like an enveloping, welcoming kind of arms to the building. And I really love that this is like a play and an inviting space, like making that nondescript parking lot into a space that's actually inviting, I think is incredible. If we just left the nature play space and invited people and had the walkway, another great point that Ben made about the multi-lappers, I'm a multi-lapper of Woodlake, you know, to have that walk space through, if you didn't have the offices right there and you had a walk space through a play space, and the offices where the amphitheater was, and the amphitheater was on the back, just to, maybe another way to use that space. And it doesn't look like we'd take too many trees if we located the offices in the multi-space, or in the amphitheater space. Other, other thought on the multipurpose rooms, and the storage, it seems like there, I know there's a lot of reason to have a lot of storage, but do we have any thoughts about having some kind, I know you could kind of use the catering space for something like a coffee shop. I would not look to the coffee shop to be a huge revenue generator for us. You know, I think at a push, it's gonna probably pay for itself, but really would add, I think, a ton to the community aspect of the community space. And so I was curious if you had thoughts of how something like that could be integrated? I kinda see that storage space right in the center as like great real estate that could be expanded or bumped up into, to, 'cause I think having a coffee shop space that functions for catering or having like a, a door, you know, the, you probably wouldn't wanna locate those separately. So I wondered if you had any thoughts around that?
I can speak to the coffee shop. So we weren't, we haven't been looking at putting an actual coffee shop in, but places that I know where they have that, it's difficult to manage and they don't necessarily pay for themselves, or they just barely break even. The one in Silverwood, from what I understand, barely breaks even.
I thought, I thought it would, that's what winning looks like for a nature center coffee shop, I'd imagine.
Yeah, yeah. What we've been looking.
Or a coffee shop that's not a solid.
Yeah. So what we've been looking at, instead of a full, like, full-fledged coffee shop, was doing snacks and coffee behind the reception, so that you could buy a cup of coffee from the reception and it'd be made there. We do a very similar thing at the community center. At the community center, we offer free coffee, though, so people can come and take their own cups and stuff. I guess that decision would still have to be made, whether it's paid for or not, but we've been looking more at having a, more of a coffee bar that's available at the reception than, than a full-fledged coffee shop situation. If that's something we need to reconsider.
I can add, oh, sorry.
Please reconsider.
Well, can I, can I request a homework of any places we could see a setup like this?
Oh, like this? Yeah, Eastman has something like this, I know. Yeah, they have a coffee pitcher behind the counter with some snacks and a glass kind of case on the counter sort of thing.
I just have to say, it sounds, it just sounds really awkward. I, I'm just, like randomly approaching a reception and being like, I heard there's like coffee available here, do I pay you? Do I, like, it just sounds very unintuitive. I, I, I think there has to be something more than that that isn't a fully staffed, like, service thing.
It feels like it fits with the vibe of our current community center and not really in a fancy new building, to me.
Or even a not fancy new building.
So I'm looking at the clock, and I know you have some more stuff that you need to go through, and we're gonna need at least fifteen to twenty minutes for the last item. So Simon, your words here before we go?
My last, my last comment on that is just, in terms of our financing and opportunities now, like, now's our chance, you know, the, the fifty to seventy thousand dollar investment we can make to take that storage room and make it something that could sustain, a, in more intentional hospitality space, I think feels really important and urgent, and the ultimate risk is that, ah, it doesn't work for that. And, you know, there, there's like, there's a cost there, but we could use it as storage, and it would not be the worst thing that happens. But if we don't do it now, it'll be fifty years before we have an opportunity to retrofit it.
We can shift gears to the renderings. We've got some exterior concepts and interior. How much time do we have so we can?
So the council meeting starts at seven, and we need a little time to talk about the ballot questions, so like five minutes stops, I would say.
Right, and sort yourself out.
All right, I'm, I'll go fairly quickly through this. For the exterior concepts, one thing that was very striking for us was standing out on the boardwalk, looking back towards the nature center, and there is a very strong horizontal line or datum. You've got the cattails below, which are this varied environment, and above you have the, the recognizable nature center roof peaks. And so in- And so in thinking about how to break down the scale of this building, um, we started trying to think about it in two ways and, and think back to the site. And one thing that struck us was when you're in the woods, any, you know, when you're in the woods, there's this varied depth, there's this variability to the trees, there's light, shadow, there's variance and there's difference. Above, bar, again borrowing from the nature center, the existing nature centers, the, these peaks, these iconic peaks that are in the view. And so looking to the site, the idea of, um, the wasps nests or the muskrat houses are these, these elements that sit above a datum. Or these objects that are self-similar, but they vary in shape, which would be the wasp nest. And so that was something that we, we sort of tried to bring forward. And so you can see the development of the building from the exterior standpoint is striking this datum, taking that datum from the place. And thinking of it sort of above and below that datum line. And so this was a quick concept sketch that you will kinda see materialize in the exterior renderings. And so I'll go through these fairly quickly. This first view would be as you're approaching via car, uh, on Lake, from Lake Shore Drive, so this is from the drive lane. This would be your pedestrian approach from that, that widened, um, that pedestrian access area. You can see the, the, um, access drive lane going, going through here. And then throughout these renderings, you can start to see the datum that is, um, kinda struck across the building. And then below that datum, um, windows and material treatments can vary based on program. And, um, and visual, the transparency that we wanna see through the building. And then above, we are using, um, these roof forms to bring light into the building. As well as to create that sort of variability and help merge the building with the landscape. So that you don't just get this big rectangle plopped in the middle of lands, in the landscape. One thing, um, to know, we're looking at doing green roof on those sloped roofs. And so that again will help merge that you won't have a big white roof, um, roof shape up there. And then so the shaped roofs, the shaped peaks would be a green roof. And then on much of the flat roof would be PV. So tying in, that's what we're, where we'd be accounting for some of the renewable energies as part of the B three and the sustainability goals. This view would be from the northwest parking lot. And so this is into that multipurpose wing is to your right. And this would be the nature play area designated is ba- is back here with, um, glass into that lounge space. This is a view from that boardwalk. Um, here you can start to see the building is slightly raised. This deck would be that, uh, observation area that stretches along the entire building. And then along the roof scape, um, in our, let's say, high-profile spaces, the multipurpose rooms above the exhibit. Um, the raptor muse, which we need additional height, um, you start to have these roof forms that pop up and, um, create variability along the length of the building.
I'm gonna interject one thing. One thing about the roof forms, in some ways they're an homage to the existing building. The existing building are just shapes that gather the spaces underneath them. These serve that function, but we're also mapping onto that the idea of having them as light monitors, right? So to daylight the interior of the space and then also to provide a surface for a green roof.
So, yeah, I'm gonna keep going. Um, we have just a few interior views, so here this would be a view as you walk through the front door into the exhibit space. Um, you can see one of the clear story windows as well as, um, the expansive view outside. This space will obviously get designed with Blue Rhino and the Science Museum to develop the exhibits in this space.
Can you just mention the ceiling heights? Just for reference.
The ceiling heights, oh yes, okay. So the datum that we have, uh, let's call it, say, struck would be the, the window heights. And the bottom of beams would be roughly at nine feet. So that is one thing that has, um, again, taking from the existing building that, that the sense of place, the, the sort of almost residential feel to that scale. Is something that has been responded to well. And then using the volume of these pop-ups to create grander spaces, to create volume for exhibits. You know, you can envision hanging things from the exhibits in those spaces. So the underside of the beams and window heads would be roughly nine to ten feet. And then the top of those peaks is in the twenty to twenty-four foot range. And those vary based on the spaces as you move across or move along the length of the building. This is a view from the center multipurpose room looking outward. So again, expansive view of the, the lake and the nature, uh, the nature center. Um, each one of these rooms would have a door, direct access to the outside. So when, um, the operable walls that would be at the underside of these beams, when those are closed, you would still have direct access outside. And this is a view looking north in one of those rooms, just showing a detail of that light monitor up above. Using those light monitors can help us balance light as well for daylighting purposes. Um, and so that, that would, it'll go into a bigger picture, design of the space and the lighting and using those, um, not only to provide views out of the space. But to help balance light and almost reduce the lighting load.
So we had a lot of our discussion earlier and given that we have some timeline issues with having the ballot questions to the appropriate people. We probably need to stop our discussion, but can we send written feedback if there's additional feedback?
Yeah, please do.
So I think at this point we probably need to talk about ballot measures, so we're running out of time, but thank you very much for all your designs.
Thank you so much.
Input if people have additional comments.
Alright, so then, uh, the sample ballot language, we can jump right into it. We have, um, the ballot language on here is, uh, the order and what's there is, was given to us. We worked with a consultant to set it up and that's what we have here, so we're interested in your thoughts on the ballot language and the order of the questions.
So the purpose is to make it as clear as possible to residents so they can make informed choices when they're voting? So is there anything that we see here that would be unclear or needs to be fixed, Ben?
Um, my main comment, um, that I, I think we're attempting at already, but I'm not sure we're as clear as we could be. Is to convey to people that, um, I think the main thing that's missing is that the twenty-year maximum would fund all three of these. I think right now it reads some, you could easily read it without doing additional research as like. If, like, our esti- I, it's an estimate, I know, uh, we have no guarantee. But that if we, if I say yes to all three, is there enough funding from this source? And I, I mean, the, the most precise, like, true answer is we don't know. Obviously it depends on what people buy, but I, I worry that this isn't clear enough that, um. Yeah, I.
Uh, can I just correct one thing? The maximum is twenty years? It is possible that if the sales taxes are more robust, it would be less than twenty years, even if voters approved all three projects.
Correct, what I'm saying is it's, it's clear that this would not continue past twenty years. It's not clear, if this were in place for twenty years, could it fund more than one project?
It can only fund up to forty-five million. Or could it fund, cuz once that's forty-five million's paid, then the tax ends or?
They can only for, fund up to the sixty-five million for all three projects.
I, I, what I'm wondering is if in the like opening setup, if we're allowed to include, like, if this tax were in place for the maximum twenty years. Estimates indicate it would generate roughly this much revenue so that people, or does that, is that like more detail than is helpful? We, we have not indicated anywhere how much revenue we're expecting and so.
Katie, so I, because that, it's not only the sixty-five million dollars worth of project costs, but it's also the financing costs. I, and that is gonna depend on interest rates and all the rest of it. I don't think it would be good to put that into the referendum question. And that's why all, almost all of these questions are, are worded so that it's forty-five million plus the cost of, of financing. Um, if, if you are saying that it's not clear that in twenty years that the three projects would be funded, that's a different question. So I guess I'm struggling a little bit with the question.
A different misinterpretation of the twenty-year thing, which might be helpful, is just another way of talking about it. Um, so I had the opposite concern, which is like, even though it sort of says it, it almost sounds like if I don't know much about it, that would be approved in three consecutive twenty-year terms.
Yeah, that's.
And then a sixty years total. So my suggestion on that, if we're allowed to not include the first for up to twenty years, it only included a maximum twenty years for all three items or something like that, second mentioned. Cuz it really does sound like, shall I authorize a twenty-year period, question one, shall I authorize a twenty-year period, question two? And I have to really read and interpret the second longer paragraph to understand that it's all one total period.
Yeah, that feels important too. That's, it is different than what I'm saying, but that feels more important to clarify. I, yeah, I guess I don't, I don't know how else to frame it. It, it, it's not clear to me reading this that, uh, if. If I were to vote yes on all three, am I setting up a competition between them? Is that clear?
Katie?
Uh, yes, I think so, and the answer is no, um, because we think there's sufficient revenues to fund all of these projects. But I, I take your point and we, we did think, we were trying to explain that the point five is it doesn't, if you vote for all three, it's gonna be one point five.
Appreciate that.
And I did not think about it as it, people interpreting it to be, you know, uh, sixty years as opposed to twenty years, but I take your point. We can try and work with the, the, the paragraph in the beginning. I don't know about the actual questions because the questions have to stand on their own, cuz they're individual questions. So I don't know about that, um, but we can look, we can look at that. I, I, I do, I understand that point, um.
Could you add some language at the very end? Those were the maximum of twenty years. Would you add something that would say for all three projects? I mean, or for, just to clarify it so people don't get the point of twenty, twenty thing.
We can look at clarifying it in that top paragraph.
In one or the other, because if you, if I'm a resident looking at all that in your, you know, you're at the ballot box and you're looking at it. It just seems like it's really wordy. I mean, it's just a lot of things for somebody to comprehend, I guess and no question. Are they gonna take the time to read?
And that is the balance, right? I mean, I'm getting conflicting, uh, feedback, which we also struggled with. We wanna add more text, but adding more text clarifies it, but then also makes it very wordy. And then, and the questions have to stand on their own.
And maybe to that end, I, I think there's words that can be cut there, we kinda kill our darlings a little bit. And it means passive voice too, which I don't love, that the residents are being asked and then they're asked to authorize. And then it kind of indirectly implies that the city is doing the asking, say the city to impose one, or you could just say the ci- like, we're asking the residents to impose a one-half percent sales tax. Only say city once, if you're Richfield residents, we know, we don't have to say the city to, so I think we could probably get back half of those words in the first line and a half, potentially. I defer, I defer to the, to the middle school teacher and the author in the room.
Well, so you, you can cut that, but you have to make sure that it's clear that you're imposing it only in the city of Richfield, cuz we don't have the authority to impose it elsewhere.
I, I guess I'm less concerned about, like, if, if there, if I had to compromise on confusion. Having a random resident think that we might be imposing a sales tax in Edina is not, is, is not my, I, I. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use a lot of words to communicate that. I think we might lose as many people as we gain the indirect objects and.
How about Richfield residents are being asked for authority to impose a one-half?
The city is collecting the tax, I don't know. I think the second Richfield you could cut, I don't think you should omit it in the first sentence, but I, I don't know. I mainly just want people to understand that there's, to Ben's point, that there's enough money for all three as we currently estimated and that it's not sixty years and that it's not one and a half percent. I'd ask you guys to come up with the most succinct way to say that.
Or even taking out that part where the bottom paragraph there says, a new building that provides wellness and recreational activities. And take some of that chunky language out.
You kinda have to tell them what it's used for.
That's the heart of it.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it provides wellness and recreational activities as well.
Yeah, I mean, in that example, that's maybe not essential, but like the Veterans Park thing is kind of scattering our different improvements, you can delete and name them.
Could we do this, and also the, the other challenge is that it's, we have a, a three-line sentence as like the first framing device. Or the, so you have to, you have to hook somebody in for three, three lines in one sentence. If we could shorten it to say something like, Richfield residents are asked to author, to impose a one-half percent sales tax and use. And use tax, period. And then that tax, you, then you could identify the three projects, the twenty years and, and the revenue. If you voted for all three, it would, it would achieve this. And then you could ex, you don't have any, any sentence that's more than a line, which I think could maybe be helpful for folks. And, and then you could add more details in the questions.
That makes sense to me, just to break it into two sentences, so it's more readable.
I think the other thing I just thought of that could shorten things is the last two sentences would be combined and shortened. If multiple questions are approved, the maximum total sales tax by the city would be point five percent and maximum time would be twenty years.
So you don't, people don't think we're raising it one and a half.
Do you need that repeated or did you catch that?
I just wanna make sure, um, so suggesting that you combine the sentences, um, at the bottom and then would not need to clarify the twenty years up at the top?
I think so, I think it would be, I don't know if you're required by state, such as to use that first language exactly, but I would prefer to not have the first twenty years and to have what was just described of. If any or all of the questions are approved, along with this question, the maximum total sales tax is point five percent for a maximum period of twenty years.
Okay.
You asked a different question than you answered.
Yeah, so I think we need it in the middle and the end, but we don't have to add it to the top.
Add which to the top?
Katie was asking, the idea based on my comment was should we add something at the top?
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant the, the pre, the main part of question one in that example, you mean additional things on the, well, what, what actually happens? Do we get to have that preamble above all three questions or what is that thing at the top?
The, the preamble is just to introduce the, the question.
On the ballot.
On the ballot, yes.
Yeah.
Then they'll have question one, two and three.
Okay, so we do get to do a preamble to all three questions then?
Uh, so the way it's written now would be preamble, question one with explanation, question two with explanation, question three with explanation. Preamble's not three times.
Okay, okay.
So then we could leave the middle section alone, cuz that looks like that's probably some legal thing that has to be said. And we could break the top into two sentences like Simon suggested. And we could possibly clarify the bottom like Ben suggested so that it's, they know it's not cumulative. Does that all work?
Yeah, I don't think it answers my initial concern, but given everything else, I think it's good and not worth the extra language to clarify that.
So, so where do we, so we're not saying that it's a maximum of five percent and a maximum of sixty-five million dollars in the preamble?
Uh, you, you can't say that, well, you could say, you could say it's a maximum of sixty-five million in project cost. Well, you could say, you could say it's a maximum of sixty-five million in project costs. But you, it's confusing to say that because they could only pass question one and then it's forty-five million.
But the max, but we're-
I think the number that would actually be relevant and I think would just be too much language to be worth it would be like, estimates indicate if this were in place for the maximum twenty years, it could generate roughly, I think it's like ninety-some million, once you cover, um, cost of interest, which, um, most people are not experts in, like, how much interest costs and so that gets confusing. And like, would be at least one sentence, if not two, that I'm not sure. I, I would love it if we could just say, like, estimates indicate that there would be enough to fund all three projects if all three are approved. But I, I don't think that's, I think that's too much editorializing.
Yeah, and I, I don't think we can go there and it wouldn't be too long, but Simon?
I guess maybe between the two parts, the, the thing that I'm most concerned that people would confuse is that they're, by voting three times, they're voting for a one and a half percent as opposed to a point five. To kind of Ben's point, I think it kind of gets, the, the total volume of funds raised will kind of get lost in people's minds. But what could be clear, what, what could be unclear and could actually sway people's votes, I could see people voting no for a one and a half percent. That'd be, and yes for a point five percent and them not easily knowing the difference. So if I had to pick one, like, less, not concerned about the sixty-five million, I'm concerned about the point five.
Could you just add the word total in there? Richfield residents are being asked authorized, the city of Richfield, to impose, or even the word, a maximum of one half percent? A total of one half percent?
I think if we have it in the bottom, because that bottom gets repeated in all three, that if it's, the bottom after each question says, if multiple questions are approved, the maximum total sales tax would be zero point five percent and maximum length of time would be twenty years.
That's true. That's very clear down there.
More clear down there than-
I, I guess, I still wouldn't, I would not understand, like, if I was just coming at this without the level of knowledge and sophistication that I'd have. I wouldn't be certain that question one was five percent, question two, that it wasn't cumulative. If I didn't explicitly somehow communicate that voting yes three times doesn't change. About yes for five percent, yeah, or point five percent.
It does seem like we already clarified that with the, those changes to the last sentence shown on the screen, which is the maximum for all three or any combination thereof would be point five percent.
Oh, did we, did we get the, okay. I'm not, I'm not tracking with all the edits in my mind. That's the language that I'm-
I think, I think the staff knows what our concern is and they will probably fix it.
Mayor, can I ask one question though? I mean, it is possible if you do not, I do think that the changes and thank you to the changes at the bottom of each question makes that clear. But if you prefer, we don't have to put it with each question. We can put it up, up at the top. Or we could even, if you wanted to really drive a point home, put it up at the top and have it on each question.
I would kind of prefer that, actually, because I think you might, you might just jump to the questions, you might not.
Yeah, having it four times is better than, because then it's clear.
It's true. You know what's better than four times? Put it in parentheses, after yes and after no, and, yeah.
Is that the feedback?
Yes, thank you, very helpful.
All right.
Ben sarcastically raised a really good point. And are we allowed to use things like parins and aster, asterces and bolding to communicate information? I actually think that's a great idea.
I don't know the answer to that. It was not in our examples.
I guess he'd probably not.
Counselor?
That's a really good question. I would guess not. I don't think it's-
That might be more confusion than it is.
I mean, I also feel like they have like a very limited copy editor or whatever they use to print those things, like, yeah.
I sway people by emphasizing certain words and-
Oh, did we?
I think it's better safe than sorry. Do you have the information that you need?
I do and we don't have time to summarize, so I think what I'll do is I'll do a summary to all of you so I know that we are on track to bringing this back to you at the council, including a summary of what we heard about the building as well. Just, I didn't have time to do it today, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Then we will, we stand adjourned.